We do. I'd like to welcome everybody. I'd like to call to order the Sex Education Advisory Board Public Hearing Number One on June 10, 2024. And so, standing as you are able, we'll just begin as a regular meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Jenny Miller.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I have a brief statement before we begin. If you don't know me yet, my name is Michael McVeigh, the Board President. We have a quorum tonight, one, two, three, four. I understand we have two other members that are going to be joining us just a little bit late, and one can't be here this evening, so we do indeed have a quorum. So this is indeed a board meeting. I'd like to welcome you to this special meeting of the Saline Area Schools Board of Education. Michigan statutes specify the formation of a sex ed advisory board, the SEAB, with very specific parameters regarding the SEAB's makeup and its charge. So according to Michigan law and our resulting board policy, 2418, before we, as a district, adopt any revisions in the materials or methods used in sex education instruction, the board shall hold at least two public hearings on the proposed revisions. Tonight, we will hold the first of these public meetings, and the second will occur sometime in August, but really no later than September. This evening's special education, special Board of Education meeting has a quorum of board members tonight, and we're joined near the table by the co-chairs of the SEAB, Cameron Cochran, a school administrator in the district, and Kristin Hoffman-Piebler, a parent in the district. And they will be doing the bulk of the presentation tonight. I'd like to also note that two board members were active participants on this committee during the year, trustee Susan E. Step and trustee Lauren Gold. Now, there may also be in the audience some SEAB members. I won't call you out by name because I don't know who you all are, but I do want to thank you for your service and your time that you spent working on this is rather difficult. The co-chairs will, the evening will take, will consist of three parts. The co-chairs will provide an overview, a presentation of the revisions to the curriculum, and then the members of the Board of Education will pose clarifying questions to them related to these revisions. We're not deliberating on acceptance yet. We are at the point where we're just seeking clarifying questions. It's an important distinction. Finally, the floor is going to be open to the public for public comment on the curriculum. You're encouraged to share your thoughts and pose questions related to the curriculum revisions. Members of the SEAB will take your questions, and we're not quite sure yet about how we will respond, either by email directly or in a public-facing document. And we also reserve the right to answer some of your questions immediately if they're really quickies, like easy answers that might move the ball down the field. With that said, I'd like to introduce you to Kristin Hoffman-Piebler and Cameron Cochran. And then the floor is yours. You know how to work the microphone? And those at home are watching this presentation, and we're anxious to find out what you have to say.
All right, good evening. Thank you for gathering tonight for the first of two public hearings on the recommendation of new sexual education curriculum for fourth through eighth grades here at Saline Area Schools. We are excited to present this information to the stakeholders of Saline Area Schools after many years of work by the members of multiple terms of the sex ed advisory boards here in Saline. We'd like to start this evening with a brief tour of our current sex ed curriculum. And following that, we'll talk about our students' need for an updated curriculum, then introduce our recommendation to the public and the Board of Education. As Mr. McVeigh said, my name is Cameron Cochran. I am the proud Assistant Principal at Heritage School here in Saline.
I'm Kristin Hoffman-Piebler, proud parent of Saline Hornets.
So after we introduce our recommendation, as Mr. McVeigh said, there will be time for questions from the board as well as public comment. So what does SAS currently use for sex ed in the fourth through eighth grade? The term inadequate is not one that I would usually ascribe to anything associated with Saline Area Schools. However, anyone with the most basic knowledge of our current adolescent health programming would agree that we can do better by our students in this regard. As you can see, in grades four through six, we utilize the program called Puberty the Wonder Years. The program was originally written in 2002. We currently utilize the version that was approved in 2010. And the videos that are utilized in that are from, were recorded first in the year 2000. So while the information on the concept of puberty has not changed, the ways in which students engage with educational content certainly has. The videos are so outdated that the information is getting lost in the awe of the olden days. Sadly, we have teachers on staff at Heritage that, as fourth and fifth graders, both here in Saline and in other districts, viewed the exact same video as our current students, with the only thing different being the fact that a VHS player was used at that time. In sixth and seventh grade, you can see we utilize the Wonder Years and then going up to, sorry, in sixth grade, we utilize the Wonder Years. Going up to the seventh and eighth grade, the focus is largely on mammalian and human reproduction. The bulk of the text utilized in that program is from 2002 with some updates in 2010. You can see that in grade seven, the biology lessons are from a textbook from 2005. So since the early 2000s, the district, oh, sorry, I will also say in eighth grade, the current curriculum utilizes select lessons from the 2010 version of the Michigan model curriculum. And for context, next year's eighth grade class were newborns or not yet born when that curriculum was first written. Since the early 2000s, this district has made many improvements in a variety of areas. We've heard from students, staff, and families, anecdotally and through survey responses, that improvements are needed to our sex ed curriculum.
So, why now? Why do we need an update? Well, a huge part of it is technology. With the internet at their fingertips, children are accessing, sending, and receiving more sexually explicit information at younger ages than their parents ever did. Twenty-first century kids have to learn how to navigate the quick and easy access they have to developmentally inappropriate sexual materials. And did you know, I didn't know this, that 54% of kids have seen or accessed porn by the time they are 13, and that the average age of first porn access is less than 12 years old? And we know so far that sexting occurs in our district between fifth and 12th grades. It's really imperative that we help kids make safe choices by giving them useful and accurate information to guide them. So today's students need comprehensive, evidence-based, and inclusive curriculum in order to provide them with timely and accurate sex ed information before they become sexually active. Myriad studies show that the sooner we start developmentally appropriate teaching about sexual health, both at home and at school, the safer kids are and remain for longer. You'll also see on this slide the new law that was enacted in July 2023. The Michigan Legislature enacted this bill called Senate Bill 66 that requires all Michigan school districts to teach and provide materials on sexual assault and consent to all students, grades six through 12. This is similar to the HIV law in that it's required teaching separate from sex ed. And that means that regardless of whether or not a district chooses to adopt a sex ed curriculum, they still must teach about HIV and AIDS, and now sexual assault and consent. A new curriculum will satisfy this new requirement from Michigan. We have new survey results. K-12 Insight helped us complete a survey last year in 2023 of stakeholders, students, staff, and caregivers to identify the community's thoughts around sex ed teaching and learning. And we'll review some highlights of that survey in a future slide. As Cameron already said, it's clear that our curriculum is old. SAS has long been committed to best practices in education, and sex ed should also align with that mission. So let's look at some data. In a newly published article, I'm actually starting at the bottom of the slide. It was just easier to put the bar at the top. In a newly published article from JAMA, the Journal of American Medical Association, the onset of a girl's first period is about six months earlier than in prior decades at the age of just under 12. And this means that when you think of a bell curve, if the middle is 12, there's a significant increase in the number of girls getting their periods as early as age eight or nine. That's a really big difference. If we think of fourth graders being the beginning of puberty education, they're already nine walking in the door, most likely. And so there are kids in our third-grade buildings who have already gotten their periods before they get this education. Washtenaw County participates in the MiFi Health Behavior Survey on odd school years. We don't have the 2023 data out yet. And you'll notice that this data, if you look at the slide, shows a marked increase in sexual intercourse from ninth to 11th grade. This is a clear indicator that what we are currently teaching is not resonating with students or affecting change. And being able to scaffold information from middle school to high school should decrease these percentages. It's also important to note that of the 11 districts in Washtenaw County, only six participate in these years. The MiFi survey is the easiest way for our community, and this committee in particular, to track the trends in our community. And I would encourage the district to continue participation at the middle school and high school levels so that we can accurately assess our students' needs when it comes to health and safety. So, let's look at the national trends. The chart that you see on the slide is from the National Center of Health Statistics. It breaks down by age the probability that a person has had vaginal intercourse by that age. You can see that the probability increases at every age over the two time periods, from the top line of at age 15.11, or 11%, to 21% below that. Equally concerning is that this same report tells us that reported condom use has decreased to less than 50% for females and to 68% for males. What does that mean? More kids are having sex with less protection. And this is only vaginal sex. Oral sex rates are higher at 25 to 28% by the age of 16 and begins at a younger average age, prior to the age of 15. So how do we help our kids? By acknowledging that sex will be a part of the human experience for most of us and give our kids accurate information before they start sexual activity. So, Saline Area Schools has long been committed to a comprehensive sex ed curriculum, for decades, in fact. What does that mean? It means that we are teaching students that sexual health is a whole-person commitment. It involves your body, your mind, your heart, and your head. It aims to provide all the information you need to make safe and healthy decisions, starting in puberty, through teenhood, and into adulthood. Does it include abstinence? Absolutely. And it actually stresses abstinence as the only 100% effective method of prevention for sexual health and well-being. Does a comprehensive curriculum encourage a child to have sex? Actually, it's the opposite. For decades, studies have shown that kids, giving kids more information actually makes them less likely to choose to be sexually active. And someday, when they do choose to have sex, they are more likely to protect themselves and their partners from STIs in pregnancy. I want to highlight this top link here, the importance of access link. It is a really, really excellent annotated overview from the American Academy of Pediatrics for the need for comprehensive sex ed for school-aged children. It walks you through just about any question that you could imagine on that one. And the other two links here are two landmark longitudinal studies over decades of time that support the link between comprehensive sex ed and decreased early sexual activity and safer choices when kids finally do decide to have sex. So, that K-12 survey. A portion of the K-12 survey, the whole thing is linked here, but we're just going to review some of the themes. You all saw this. We did a public presentation on this last year. We surveyed current caregivers, students, and staff in our district about sex ed scope and sequence. And across the board, every stakeholder group wants more information earlier for students. They want all students included in the curriculum, including students from different cultures and LGBTQ students. And they want kids to learn about consent. And it was concerning how many comments there were from students about sexual assault experiences and dating violence experiences. And our district data does support that same anecdotal evidence. Here are a couple of looks at some of these comments. These are taken right from the survey. "Health class should never be about convincing students to not have sex, but instead teaching them how to be safe when they inevitably become adults and make that decision." I'm not going to read to you all of these slides, but you'll see the themes here. Parents, they want consent and communication earlier, less shame, avoiding abstinence-only messages. There are, in every group, people who are resistant to having sex ed in school at all. Unfortunately, Michigan law supports that. There is no penalty for having your kid not participate. And you'll see here from the staff, it's the same messages coming from them. Cameron?
All right. So getting into our new curriculum or our recommended curriculum, our team of Saline community members and staff reviewed four different curricula written for our target age group, of fourth through eighth grade. We then narrowed it down to two potential curricula, and then did a deep dive into those two. After significant discussion over multiple months, the SEAB voted unanimously with one abstention to move Positive Prevention Plus forward to the public hearing process. P3, as we like to call it, is aligned with the National Sexual Health Education Standards as well as the SAS policies, mission, and goals. It is evidence-based and comprehensive, and it is aligned with best practice in sexual health education. P3 is regularly reviewed every two years. And any updates that we would propose would go through this same process. It grows with our students each year. So, fourth through eighth grade, consistent language is utilized, and it is in an age-appropriate way. The methods of instruction are also consistent. So we will now begin to tell you about our recommendations. It's important to start this part of the presentation by saying that per Michigan law, SAS families always have the right to review the curriculum, resources, and videos ahead of time, observe instruction, and opt their children out of adolescent health if they choose to do so. Public review of the recommended updates will be available at Liberty starting this week through the second public hearing in late August. Community members interested in reviewing the curriculum and materials are encouraged to email me or Kara Davis to schedule a time to do so. So we're now going through our proposed scope and sequence. We'll look at each grade level and then highlight some example slides, videos, and resources within each grade level. One nice thing about the Positive Prevention Plus curriculum is that it is designed to be flexible. That means that districts can create the sequence of lessons that works best for their particular district's needs. In the next few slides, we will give an overview of the recommended scope and sequence for each grade level and highlight key parts of lessons in greater detail. The upper elementary curriculum consists of eight lessons divided between fourth and fifth grades. Currently, adolescent health is taught in fourth and fifth grades over the course of about one week in the spring at Heritage, and the proposed curriculum would be consistent in this regard. In the fourth grade, you can see that there are six lessons that help students to understand some of the changes that they are currently going through or will be going through soon. And it also supports students with being a kind and respectful peer. So here are some slides from Lesson Three and Lesson Four. Lesson Four is covered in both the fourth and the fifth grades, and we'll talk more about that in a little bit. So Lesson Three is about bullying behaviors and about not partaking in behavior like that. Ground rules for social media are included in that lesson. So as Kristin mentioned, students having access to technology. And this time, it's important to be having those conversations both at home and at school. So this slide in Lesson Three talks about boundaries when being pressured and walks through potential scenarios with students and potential responses to avoid risky behaviors and situations. This lesson also includes strategies in how to communicate your feelings, both non-verbally and verbally. I will say too, later on during the question and answer period, if the board would like to see any more of this in greater detail, we can certainly go through that. So this is Lesson Four on Puberty. And this slide talks about the changes in someone with a vagina during puberty, so utilizing inclusive language, which was an appeal that the SEAB felt was appropriate. Within Lesson Four, it also talks about the social and emotional changes that students experience during puberty. A big goal of adolescent health is to de-stigmatize and reduce shame and normalize this complicated process in a student's life. So all four of the curricula we reviewed were more inclusive than our current programming. The committee appreciated the fact that Positive Prevention Plus uses inclusive language and covers topics such as gender and sexual identity in an age-appropriate way. For example, in Lesson Four, which occurs in fourth and fifth grade, on puberty, the following terms are defined: biological sex, gender, sexual orientation, gender identity, gender expression, and transgender. In Lesson Four, it is solely the definitions that are given to students. Students are encouraged to have conversations when they have deeper questions with a trusted adult at home. Each lesson comes with an accompanying teacher resource that walks through scripts and prompts for teachers to use. Here's an example of the first page of the Lesson Four teacher resource. Each lesson is about 10 pages long, give or take, and that includes the classroom materials that are used for those lessons. So, moving on to fifth grade. You'll notice that there are repeated lessons here that were the same in fourth and fifth, specifically Lesson Four on Puberty, Lesson Six on Hygiene, and Lesson Eight on Staying Safe and Healthy. This is purposeful, since spiraling of information from year to year improves student learning and retention. So also note that in Lesson Five on Human Reproduction, the committee recommends that Part E of that lesson that defines sexual intercourse be removed from the fifth grade and moved to sixth. The lesson still includes reproductive structure and function for both male and female anatomy. This is consistent with the current curriculum that's in place now, the scope and sequence that's utilized. Lesson Five also defines ejaculation and masturbation. This is an update from the existing curriculum. The curriculum includes drawings of erections and ejaculations like in the following slides. So here on Lesson Five, the idea of external and internal sexual organs is introduced. So here, it's defining what erection is and that they can sometimes occur in embarrassing time, again, trying to reduce shame and inform students. Here's the slide that defines nocturnal emissions, which is currently in place, as well as masturbation, which is an update, emphasizing that this is a private behavior. So in Lesson Seven, we fulfill the state law to teach HIV in every building where adolescent health is taught. The committee recommends moving, sorry, removing the discussion on other STIs in this lesson and solely focusing on HIV. So another important component of the recommended curriculum is its focus on consent and refusal skills that Kristin talked about a little bit earlier, doing so in an age-appropriate way as well. These concepts will be taught in the K-Three buildings during the body safety presentations that were presented last fall. These will, these concepts will be reviewed during adolescent health in the fourth through eighth grades, again, in an age-appropriate way. Here we can see an example of that type of discussion in Lesson Eight, which is covered in the fourth and fifth grades. The committee had a lengthy discussion on whether or not to include Lesson Eight in its entirety because of the mention of sex trafficking as an example of something one should never be asked to do, namely, engaging in sexual acts for money. Ultimately, the committee decided to only recommend showing the consent video in fourth grade, omitting the rest of the Lesson Eight at that grade level. For fifth grade, the committee decided to recommend showing the consent video again and covering parts C through F of that lesson that do not mention sex trafficking. Part C through F focuses on staying physically and mentally healthy. And some sample slides from that lesson are shown here. Again, the committee appreciated the holistic approach to this curriculum and its emphasis on not just the physical changes, but the social, emotional, and mental changes that occur during puberty. So, within the Positive Prevention Plus curriculum, there are embedded videos within each lesson that help frame the main theme of that lesson. You'll notice that at each grade level, the SEAB decided to add some supplemental videos for some topics. These videos are meant to engage students and to help further explain certain important concepts. A large majority of these topics are addressed in the current curriculum. The recommended updates from Positive Prevention Plus provide a more engaging, modern, and inclusive experience for Saline students. For the sake of time, we will not be showing all six of the recommended supplemental videos from fourth and fifth grade. The videos are listed here and can all be accessed through YouTube. We will show the consent video as an example, as well as one of the embedded videos included in Lesson One.
Consent for Kids. This is you. Okay, it doesn't look exactly like you, but let's say it's you. This is your body, and you get to decide what you do with your body. No one else is entitled to tell you what to do with your body. Not your friends, not strangers, not adults, you know. Not your friends, not strangers, not adults, you know. No one is entitled to decide what you do with your body, except you. That's called bodily autonomy, by the way. And that's what consent is all about. Everyone is different. Some people love to hug, and some people hate hugs. And each person gets to decide what they're comfortable with. Can a hug-loving person just start hugging someone at random? Nope. They need consent. How do people know if they have consent? They ask. Would you like a hug?
Yes, I would. Can I hold your hand?
I'd rather not.
Okay.
If a person doesn't say yes...
Can I hug you?
Um, I, uh... Then they haven't given their consent. It's really pretty simple. Ask for consent, listen to the answer. By the way, if a person bribes someone or threatens someone to say yes, that's not consent. Sometimes adults will try to tell a kid what to do with their body.
Go kiss Aunt Doris goodbye.
But the kid still gets to decide. No thanks, that makes me uncomfortable. I'll just wave goodbye. Some things kids can't consent to. They can't enter into legal contracts, they can't vote, and they can't consent to sexual stuff, because they're kids. So if an adult does something that kids can't consent to, that's not okay. The adult is wrong, and it's not the kid's fault. And that's when it's most important to tell a trusted adult, like a teacher. Why? Because it's your body, and no one else is entitled to tell you what to do with it. Practice consent.
Okay, so next, we just wanted to show one example of the embedded videos that are included within each lesson that help kind of set up the topic. So this is the start of Lesson 1. Might need to refresh here.
And that is where babies come from. Now, let's talk about the changes your bodies are going through. Can anyone tell me what is the definition of puberty?
Oh my gosh, that was awkward!
Yeah, I know. I can't stand talking about the P-word.
Which one? Puberty or period?
Ah, you guys are so gross!
Uh, guys, do you want to come over to my place to play video games?
Yeah, awesome!
Totally!
Hi, guys. Nice to see you all. So what did you learn in school today?
Well, we learned about puberty.
Oh, what did you find most interesting about the lesson on puberty?
So at the end of that lesson, there's a follow-up video where the students are sitting around and talking about how it actually wasn't that bad. That kind of fear of the unknown is a common theme among 4th and 5th graders during Adolescent Health time. Okay. So moving on to middle school. One big benefit of using the same curriculum from Heritage to the middle school is that we are expanding on the knowledge base from upper elementary, using the same format and language, but increasing the content, again, in a developmentally appropriate way. The familiarity sets students up for learning right away, because they recognize the format and know what to expect from the curriculum. In 6th grade, as in the current curriculum, intercourse is defined. Similar to 4th and 5th grade, the recommended lessons for 6th graders include topics meant to help students understand some of the changes they are currently going through or will be going through soon, and support with being a kind, respectful peer. You can see the similar topics, and again, the increase in language and how it's discussed at the 6th grade level. Okay, so as in previous grades, the CEB decided to add supplemental videos to the curriculum. In Grade 6, we wanted to include a video that goes into detail about how someone gets pregnant, but we were split between two good options. The committee recognized that some community members may have concerns with a resource from Planned Parenthood. We are asking that the board determine which of the following two videos should be approved to show our 6th grade students. I will show you the first video from Amaze and the second video from Planned Parenthood. Again, both of these can be accessed via YouTube.
Where do babies come from? Like, how do we get here? When broken down, it's a simple thing. Every species reproduces, but in different ways. For humans to make a baby, there's lots of stuff that must be just right. But the two key players are the womb and the egg. At puberty, everyone's body changes and becomes able to reproduce. At some point between the age of 8 to 13, a person that is biologically a female starts ovulating. It's also called the menstrual cycle, or starting their period. About once a month, the ovaries release a teeny tiny egg into the fallopian tubes. If it's not fertilized after it's released, the egg is flushed out of the body during the period. When a person that is biologically male starts puberty, usually between 12 and 16, the testicles begin to make sperm cells. These cells travel in milky fluid created by another gland. This mixture is known as semen. This is the fluid that is released during an ejaculation. There are lots of ways a sperm and egg can get together and join. One of the most popular ways is when semen is released from the penis into the vagina. Once those little swimmers are in there, the sperm races through the vaginal canal, past the cervix, through the uterus, into the fallopian tubes. Sperm are drawn to the egg like a moth to a flame. Now, if you don't want to become pregnant when you have sex, there are a lot of simple ways to stop it from happening. We call this contraception. When you want to have a baby, sometimes people are not able to have a baby using the most popular method. When this happens, doctors can totally help them out, like using a tool to place sperm into the vagina near an egg. Or, a doctor can actually join the sperm and egg together outside of the body, and then place the fertilized egg into the uterus. All these methods achieve the same thing: the sperm and the egg get together and unite, becoming a single cell. This is called a zygote. As the zygote travels down the fallopian tube towards the uterus, looking for a place to nest, this tiny ball of cells divides and multiplies over and over and over. If the zygote does not find a good nesting spot in the uterine lining, it passes out of the body during menstruation or the period. If the zygote does find a nesting place, this marks the moment when pregnancy actually begins, and the fetus starts to grow into what is called an embryo. The time it takes for a baby to develop is divided into three stages called trimesters. It takes an embryo about nine months, or 39 weeks, to develop into a fully-developed baby. The zygote starts the size of a poppy seed and grows into the size of, well, a baby. Most of a pregnancy takes place in the warm and comfy uterus, also known as the womb. It has all the nutrients needed for that little ball of cells to develop into a fully-formed body. During the 39th week, a fetus is considered full term. After about nine months, a baby is generally ready to enter the world. There are several different ways a baby can make their appearance into the world. They usually come through the vagina, but sometimes, if necessary, doctors need to help them out. They do this by opening the uterus and removing the baby that way. This is called a cesarean section, or a C-section for short. Making babies is a natural part of life, and we all start from the joining of a sperm and egg. We're all more alike than you think.
Here's the second video on the same topic.
Pregnancy is a pretty amazing process. It all starts with sperm and an egg. Sperm are tiny microscopic cells that are made in testicles. Sperm cells mix with other fluids to make semen, which spurts out of your penis when you ejaculate. Eggs live in ovaries, and the hormones that control your menstrual cycle cause eggs to mature every month. These hormones also make the lining of your uterus thick and spongy to prepare for a possible pregnancy. Every month, one mature egg leaves your ovary. This is called ovulation. That egg travels through your fallopian tube, which takes about 12 to 24 hours. If semen gets into your vagina, sperm can swim up through your cervix, uterus, and fallopian tubes, searching for an egg. Sperm cells can live in your body for up to six days, waiting for an egg to show up. Millions of sperm come out during each ejaculation, but it only takes one sperm to meet with an egg, which can lead to pregnancy. When a sperm cell joins with an egg, it's called fertilization. After that happens, the fertilized egg begins to divide into more and more cells and moves towards your uterus. The ball of cells gets to your uterus about three to four days after fertilization, or it can float around for another few days. If the ball of cells attaches to the spongy uterine lining, pregnancy officially begins. This is called implantation. It usually takes around three to four days to finish implanting. Up to half of all fertilized eggs naturally don't implant. They pass out of your body during your period. When the ball of cells implants into your uterine lining, your body starts making pregnancy hormones. These hormones keep your uterine lining in place, so it can nourish the pregnancy. That's why you don't get your period when you're pregnant. But if sperm and egg don't meet up, or a fertilized egg doesn't implant into your uterus, the lining isn't needed, and it flows out of your vagina. That's your period. So it actually takes a lot of steps and up to two to three weeks for pregnancy to happen. Want to learn more about pregnancy? Check out PlannedParenthood.org. Pregnancy is a pretty amazing...
Okay, so here are some additional sample slides from Lessons 1, 2, and 4 that are taught at the 6th grade level. In the 6th grade, there is a lesson on gender and sexual orientation that goes a little bit deeper than just the defining of the terms, but is also framed in the importance of respecting those that may have different identities than us. Again, this is important for all of our students to be able to see themselves in our curriculum. So again, these are topics that students may have an awareness of, they may have heard before, but there is often confusion about these terms. On a separate lesson on bullying and abuse, again, this kind of adds to the lesson in the upper elementary on bullying behaviors and mentions sexual harassment. Again, this is just one slide in that lesson. There are multiple examples of kind of bullying and abuse, but you can see this is an example of how the language has kind of increased into this more middle school experience. Within this lesson, the idea of consent is reintroduced. Okay, then going into 7th grade. In 7th grade, Lessons 3 and 4 are repeated from 6th grade to, again, spiral that information. We also recommend addressing HIV to ensure that the state law is covered and STIs. Note that in Lesson 12 on HIV and STIs, we are recommending Parts A and B only of that lesson, which teaches how viruses are spread. It eliminates, by taking out aspects of that lesson, how to find resources for testing. It is excellent information in a well-planned format, but we felt as a committee that it did not fit our community's particular needs at the middle school level. Sorry, that was Lesson 12 on HIV/STI: How Viruses Are Spread. It covers Parts A and B only, by talking about how viruses are spread, talking about HIV, but it does not include how to find resources for testing. So here are some examples of in-class resources that students will complete during lessons that help guide conversations and discussions within the class. So it's not just a sit-and-get format, rather, students are asked to kind of engage with the content. So this document on the left about my escape plan is tied to Media and Peer Pressure, Lesson 11. Same with the document on the right, the sample pressure lines. It's kind of hard to see, but one of the pressure lines at the top says, "Come to the party with me, there won't be any parents, and we can get totally loaded." And then, a negotiation response is something that the students would work together with the teacher, how to respond in that difficult, risky situation. Within that lesson, there's also practice of assertive skills and refusal skills. All right, and Kristin will be talking about the 8th grade lessons.
We made it to 8th grade! Home stretch! So, Grade 8 is where we see the biggest differences from our current curriculum. Right now, in 8th grade, there are pages from a biology textbook that are really centered on a lot of mammalian biology and also humans, like we are in the mammal category. There is a little bit of social-emotional learning, but for the most part, everything comes from this very dry biology textbook. We felt strongly as a committee that only covering sexual reproduction from a biology textbook is insufficient, given the complex challenges and social situations middle school students face. With the updated curriculum, we have the opportunity to empower students with more knowledge and tools to maneuver through the challenges of adolescence in the 21st century. And as my 7th grader reminds me nearly daily, "Mom, things are not the same as when you were my age." And she's right. The sequence begins with a quick review of anatomy from the 6th grade Lesson 1, and then moves into the prevention of pregnancy, including birth control options, and then teen pregnancy itself, including fetal development, alternatives to keeping the baby, and decision-making. And please note that in accordance with Michigan law, this lesson does not mention abortion as an option. So let's take a look at a slide. What is the best way to avoid a pregnancy? This curriculum leans into abstinence in many of the lessons, like in this slide. You'll see right away, the first bullet in red is choosing not to have sex is the only certain way to prevent an unplanned pregnancy. And then here's the slide about options. You'll notice there is no mention anywhere about abortion. Safe surrender is one of the Michigan law requirements, and we do talk about that in this lesson. And then they go on to fetal development, that, again, scaffolding on the information that they learned in 6th grade about how pregnancy occurs, then what happens during that pregnancy? We talk about fetal development. There is a slide for each trimester. This is the first trimester slide. The other two look exactly like this, just with second and third trimester information. Here's an example of what that looks like. And then, we also cover STIs in 8th grade. And why do we do that? Well, we know from the previous data that by the time a kid comes into 9th grade, 11% of them, 21% of them in between 2015 and 2019, have already had sex before walking in the door. Most Celine-area schools' high school kids take... Most Celine area schools' high school kids take health class in 9th grade, so we have missed 1 in 5 of those kids already. Sexually transmitted infections are a very real consequence, and we also learned that less than 50% of females use condoms and less than 70% of males do. That's not great odds. STIs again. Here you see that abstinence messaging again, and you might be thinking, "Why can't we just leave it at that and just say, 'You guys just don't have sex.'" Because kids need the "why." They need the "why." Why is it important to wait? Why do we need to be prepared mentally, physically, and emotionally for sexual activity? It's not enough just to say, "Don't do it." And teens are pretty concrete thinkers for quite a while, but they're also in this wing-stretching time of life where they want more independence and more grown-up behaviors and thinking, and this slide gives them actionable choices for themselves, for the teens, to be in control and to keep themselves safe. We get to a point as parents where we don't get to choose their own adventure anymore, they're choosing their own. We want students to own this information long before they are in a decision-making situation, just like when we practice stop, drop, and roll in Safety Town, we practice other healthy info and choices as well. And we pair it with something they already know, for example, universal precautions. This generation of kids just survived a pandemic. They know this stuff. So let's review this and then apply the same logic to sexual health. Introducing condoms and the vital role they play before the student is in a sexual situation increases the chances that they're going to remember the importance of condom use with sex. Do we want the first choice to be abstinent? Absolutely. So let's end the lesson and reinforce that message again. Spiraling that information around and around keeps it relevant and in their heads. And let's address why making safe choices is important. Here are two of the activities in the final lesson of 8th grade. The "why" every teen is looking for. Goal-setting. What are my goals for the next few years of my life? And then, the personal contract. How am I going to get to those goals? By not getting pregnant, not having an STI, not putting myself into risky situations, all of these things that we've talked about since 4th grade that keep building and scaffolding and growing with the kids. Like the rest of the lessons, we have supplemental videos. You've seen these. And they reinforce that messaging of the discussions in a visual format that kids are super used to. Now, one of the parts of Positive Prevention Plus that we really love is the appendix of parent resources and education. Sex Ed starts at home with a million tiny conversations. Because it can be difficult for some of the grownups to get started with those conversations, we love that P3 recognizes and supports the importance of caregiver conversations with their kids. Having this appendix of resources and the grownup and student homework after each lesson gives caregivers lots of opportunities for talking with their own students on their own time and with their own values included. And here are a couple of examples of the parent resources. One is guidelines for parents for talking with children and teens. Be honest. Use those teachable moments as they come up. You know, you see in old movies, like in the 80s and stuff, where the parents will sit down with their kids and say, "All right, I'd like to tell you about the birds and the bees." And then they have this one conversation, and everybody knows everything about having sex, and everyone lives happily ever after, and the laugh track and the clap track comes in, right? Real life doesn't work like that. We are taking those tiny moments, the little blips of things we see on TV, the little conversations that we hear on the bus, all of these things, and we create teachable There's also sexting. My generation, who are having kids, we didn't have cellphones. I didn't get a cellphone until I was nearly an adult. What is sexting? Why do they do it? Why isn't it okay just to take away the phone? Why doesn't that fix it? And again, it comes back to that "why." Kids want to know "why." Why do we have these rules? Why do you have expectations for me? All those things. And the parent resources are fantastic about addressing those questions for grownups before they talk to their kids. And as a parent of teens, I recognize that in all sorts of ways, my job is to ready my kids to move through the world without me, and I have to balance my rules and my expectations with their emerging independence, so that when I'm not there, they have the information that they need to make safe choices for themselves, even if it might look different than what I had planned for them. And that process of trust-building takes time and attention. It's those millions of tiny conversations. And talking about healthy human sexuality with our kids is part of that trust-building independence project called parenting, and this curriculum supports that work. Thank you so much for making it through this with us.
Yeah, and before we hand it over to the board for questions, again, I just wanted to thank our SEAB members, the community members that were a part of this lengthy process to identify this curriculum and propose it for recommendation. Without their support, we wouldn't be here. And, you know, ultimately, what we're trying to do here is just to help make Celine area schools a more informed and safer place for kids. So what questions do you all have?
First of all, Cameron and Kristin, thank you very much. It was not nearly as challenging as you tried to persuade as that it was, but we'll go around the table. If you have something to say, I'll just try and make eye contact, and we'll go from there. Thanks.
I have some questions and comments, so I'll start, but then if you want me to stop, or if you want to get back to us, those are always options. So one of the things that you said is that this is kind of an accumulative curriculum, that it grows with the kids. So when they start in 4th grade, it kind of starts the vocabulary and some of the formatting that then is familiar as they move forward. So I wondered if you might have a plan for how it will be implemented so that the 8th graders aren't coming into it without that accumulation previous. So do you want me to pause on that? I didn't know, since they won't have the 4th, 5th, 6th, 7th, they'll be coming from a different curriculum. Is there a way for us to bridge that for them? The current, like the incoming, the people who would have it first, I guess, in 8th grade?
Yeah, I mean, I think that if this were to be approved by the board, I think that there could be a way that we catch some kids up over time, and we can absolutely create a catch-up scope and sequence for that. The thing that's so great is that these are modules that you can pick and pull and pull them apart, and we can, I think that's an easy ask. Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I mean, often with curriculums, that happens, where, you know, like a phonics curriculum, when there's a change to a more explicit phonics curriculum, there's sometimes holes and gaps that we see. So I think that could be something that the definitely curriculum team, the teaching and learning team, could help with too. I'm trying to think of what else I can-
And I would just say too, that, you know, if it was a 7th grade kind of catch-up curriculum, we wouldn't be introducing any 8th grade concepts, right?
Yeah, right, exactly.
So, you know, we would be mindful of that age-appropriate concept.
Yeah, it would seem that you would fill in the gaps with the things that would have been previously developmentally appropriate but not introduced when they were there, because we didn't have that curriculum. Couple of other things. Oh, I wondered, for 6th grade, you showed us the two videos, and you said you wanted the board to make a decision on those two, you know, which video would be selected. So I guess my question is, typically, the SEAB comes to us with their recommendations, so I'm wondering about how you would like us to discern and make that decision.
Well, honestly, the committee was almost completely split in half, and so we thought, "Well, let's open it up and see if you guys, like if one of them jumps out to you." We were very hesitant to put a Planned Parenthood video in there, because there are strong feelings about that organization. However, this content is so great. The way that they present it with labels and very, you know, line-drawing, clinical, it feels really accessible to kids. But we didn't want to make that decision without some extra input, which is why we're sending the choice over.
I wonder, when I was watching it, when I was watching the two of them, the one thing that did come to mind was because we know there is kind of a stigma and some strong feelings regarding Planned Parenthood, the end of that video when it says, "Want to know more about this?"
Right.
So I wondered if Planned Parenthood, I know it's probably copyrighted, is there a way for us to get around having that ending piece? That was one thing that I was thinking about.
So that's a really good question, and it kind of brings up a point too, about some of the lessons that we've decided to take portions out of. So what, we would do, for an example, a lesson that we decided to remove an aspect of that, we would create a different slideshow presentation, so that those slides from that lesson that were removed would be not even available to teachers to access, to show to kids in classrooms. We could certainly look at the feasibility of, I guess, editing YouTube, you know, video and reach out to the organization if it was something that we decided to do. That's definitely something that we could-
Okay, I was just curious, because it does also seem that, like, "You want to know more about this? We're learning about it, you know, in this class." So, you know, that's also something that I was thinking about. I'm sure I have others, but I'm not going to take up all of the time. I am anxious to hear feedback from the community and from people who are watching at home and here in the room, because there was lots to think about. I took lots of notes. So I want to hear from the rest of the table, and if there's more, I'll come back.
So first, I don't want to give too much. I know this is an opportunity for the public, you know, as it's a public forum, to give the input, and I would like that to be, you know, prior to the board getting the recommendation and, you know, you all taking so much of what our opinions are, is super helpful. But, you know, I'm looking forward to hearing from the public as a whole as well.
Yeah, and one of the things that we love about this process is that a lot of times, you all are going to ask questions that the public already has, and so by doing it this way, and following, you know, meeting orders and rules and things like that, that we're hoping to catch some of those questions from you, that the public might also be thinking in their minds too. Go on.
Yep, just don't want to restrict the board have any restrictions, you know, on any of this prior to-
Yeah.
Yep. So I want to thank the SEAB members and the co-chairs as well, and Lauren. You know, I think this has been a lot of work that's been happening over the past couple years, and it was a really, really deep dive into the curriculum. And did we have four or five, like at first, that we went through? And so it was a really, I think, great process. I'm glad that we had stuff from the previous SEAB, where the survey took place, and that we had all of those goals set. And so I'm glad that we're finally at this point, and hopefully get to the point of the high school curriculum soon as well. You know, I think we got a great committee that's, you know, doing some great, great work. So, thank you, Kristin, for mentioning my survey data. When I saw the current data, I was kind of disappointed that that didn't include our middle school data, because that decision was made last minute for the middle schoolers, I believe, seventh grade, to not take the survey here in the district. That was just kind of a quick decision, and that was very, very unfortunate. And so, you know, thank you for mentioning that. I back that up 100%. Question with, will classes be split up by gender? As I know they are.
Yeah, so it is our recommendation that classes do not be split by gender for a couple of reasons. One, it is best practice and has been in sexual education for a very long time to not split classes up by gender. And two, by not splitting the kids up, A, you are keeping them with their school family that they have already built relationships with, and B, you're building empathy for other kids. And it also decreases the stigma of when the kids, you know, girls walk out of one room and boys walk out of the other, and they look at each other and go, "Oh, my God, what did you hear?" You know? That there's no surprises, and there's no secrets, and everybody knows everything, and they can talk about it, and reduce shame and stigma. So our recommendation is no, don't split.
Awesome. Two more questions. So I guess I was looking at kind of the bullying resources, and I know there is kind of a sequence here that's been created. So, and just as an example, the bullying. Have you all thought about, or can you supplement materials from, like, our policies or our student handbooks? And also law, I'm thinking about, like, maybe laws around sexting, that kind of thing. So it's kind of a couple of questions about supplemental materials and what flexibilities the educators will have.
Yes, so with bullying specifically, to answer your question, Susan, yes, we do recommend supplementing at least the Celine area schools' board policy, the anti-bullying policy, as a component of those lessons that address bullying, especially at the middle school level, but really in all. And I think when we shared some of our proposed final scope and sequence that's in there, although I'm seeing that it might not have gotten to this slide for 6th grade, but yeah, and we're open to feedback too, if there's other possible resources or things like that that would be beneficial, but at least SAS board policy.
Yeah, that's helpful to have that, yeah, flexibility, especially when it's part of the school, right? And then my last, I guess, ask of you all. So the committee as a whole didn't create the scope and sequence, so I wanted you all to kind of explain that process and how you got feedback from the committee members once working on that. Thank you.
Yeah, I can address it, and feel free to chime in. Correct, so with how the P3 curriculum is written, it's not defined to specific grade levels. So Kristin and I, as the co-chairs, worked together to create a scope and sequence that laid out an initial draft of where we felt would be most appropriate to have these conversations around these specific lessons at which grade level. And then we sent it out to the SEAB for review. We had some conversations both in person as well as through Google surveys to get people's feedback, and then made revisions based on those conversations.
Thank you. I love transparency, and I just wanted to make sure that that was represented with the committee and to the community.
Yeah, and for example, the sex trafficking and human trafficking piece was addressed starting in upper elementary at 4th and 5th grade, and the committee as a whole felt quite strongly that that was not an appropriate lesson for our particular community, because we're pretty insular here in Celine. And we took it right out and made changes. And in addition, with the STIs in upper elementary, the committee felt as a whole that the kids didn't really need that information until middle school, and so we took it out. Yeah.
Yeah, I think there are several examples of things that we felt just didn't fit for our community, and that door is still open to that conversation. So if there are aspects that you have thoughts and questions on, we definitely want to hear that.
Thank you.
I want to echo the idea that, you know, with this hearing, I want to hear from our community and your thoughts on this program and what have you, because that's really the essence of what we're doing here. But also, you know, I also will own the fact that I'm glad I have more time in totality to review this and to listen, and I'll own the fact that Dr. Gold, you will be incredibly important to me as a pediatrician, because I seek out expertise and all of that kind of thing. But I will state my general desire, my general support for comprehensive sex ed, and I do think the work that you're doing is important, and I do want the committee to hear about my appreciation for it as well. This is a process that is messy, and it requires us to be bold, and it'll be interesting, and all of it. Let's just be hon- requires us to be bold, and it'll be interesting, and all of it, let's just be honest, but long story short, I just think it's important that I would prefer that my, you know, own children, like, you know, I could lock them in the room and never, like, ever have to have these thoughts, but at the same time, like, that wouldn't be good parenting, right? And so I appreciate the fact that our, you do this, that our committee does this, that our staff supports our students as they go through these, these discussions and all of it, so I want to make sure I say that out loud first. I wrote down the same thing that Jenny did, I took a whole bunch of notes about, you know, if we did have a preference for number two, what was the, you know, copyright issues with, you know, because Planned Parenthood can be just a challenging piece when you attach it, right? So, so I wrote that down. I wrote down a couple of other things, and you can tell me if you want more time with these things, but here's the first question I wrote down. I wrote, "Tell me about the quick version of your decision-making process as a committee." You said, like, "We took this out, but we left this in." Like, how did you engage in those things? How did you, did you make teams, and they reviewed different parts of the curriculum? Did you do it in totality as a whole? Like, I guess I'm wondering how you came to these recommendations, where we took this out, but we left that in, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, so we've been working for months on this, and normally this committee meets once a quarter, so once every three months.
Right.
And this particular group of people is really awesome, and they said, "No, no, 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 we got to meet more often than that." And so we've been meeting monthly for a long time, and we've been having these discussions face to face and providing opportunity for Google Form commentary for people who maybe didn't want to say something right in the middle of a group, and that has been a fantastic way to gather feedback, too. And for later, when you get home and you've been sort of rolling around in the information going, "Oh, I should have said this," having another opportunity to do that is really great. I have to commend this group of people, I've been doing this for a very long time, and this group is a fantastic team. They work so well together, they are honest, forthright, respectful, they're amazing listeners. It has been a really, really fantastic experience to get to know these people.
No, and you must have, I mean, because like, for example, I wrote down, "Grade seven, lesson 12 on HIV, not included resources for testing." There had to be a decision-making process that went through that, so like, I, I appreciate you saying that, that it was quite a-
It was a significant group, group effort.
Well, and I'm not going to, I, I appreciate that, that time and what have you. Now, I wrote down two other things, so you talked about the ninth graders, and you said something to the effect of, "How do we not miss these kids before ninth grade?" Right? So my thoughts are this, like, where are specifically seventh and eighth grade students going to encounter this? Is it in science classes, isn't it? It's part of the science curriculum, correct?
Currently, yes.
Okay, are you proposing that it stays there, or that it becomes a separate entity?
I, I would say that ultimately that's going to be a conversation that we have with building administration and with central office to see what would work best. I think logistically, we're thinking that it would be about the same time as it's covered as it is currently, about a week in science classes, but given the fact that it is more holistic, it may lend itself to a health class, in those upper grade levels especially. But again, I think that's ongoing, you know?
Okay. And I'm comfortable with leaving those at a local level, I just wanted to know the recommendation of the, of the CAB or the team. And then, and the last thing-
Can I piggyback on that a bit?
Yeah.
Just if I could?
Do it.
Taught in the science classes, taught by the same teacher, is that right? So they undergo some sort of training then during the year?
Go ahead.
Nope, go ahead.
Every teacher that teaches any sort of sex ed has to have a sex ed certification, so whoever teaches it, that is just part of the deal, that they have to have that.
It is. Oh, you're good. And then the last thing is, okay, so we are, you know, doing this third grade through eighth grade, why stop short of, or fourth grade through eighth grade? Why stop? Why, why aren't we making a recommendation in totality? Meaning, why aren't we making a recommendation that continues right through ninth grade? If we think that the continuity of this program is good for students, why stop?
That would make for a long meeting, Brad.
Okay.
No, no, but I, I think ultimately, I think we are looking to expand, right? And I think we want what's best for kids, and so we want to get feedback from the community, from you all as the board, and we, as a committee, after looking at multiple options, felt like this was the best one out there. And so there is an option at the ninth through 12th grade. We've heard from staff at the high school that, that wants more and better. We've heard from students and families through that MiFi survey as well, so I, I think that, you know, over time, that's definitely something that we'll be looking at. Again, just because we needed to have those really robust conversations and dive deep, I think we wanted to focus on this level first, and for the fact that at the high school, there, there are some things that are a little bit different and more updated.
Now it's on, sorry. Thank you to this awesome committee and our co-chairs. I would like to start by saying that I reviewed a whole lot of American Academy of Pediatrics guidelines and medical guidelines, ACOG, which is obstetrics gynecology, AMA, I looked at a lot of that, and then my friend Kristin came here with a lot of studies, so she did a lot of that work and presented it all, so I am really pleased with that, this is based in evidence. I think I just wanted to talk about a little bit of my reactions and the growth that I had thinking about this, because I might not be as, quite as obvious as it might seem. I'm a pediatrician, but I'm also a Selene parent, and as I shared with you all, I'm sort of the kind of parent who really wants my kids to hang on to their childhood. You know, I try to fight against the phones and social media and things like that, and I don't think that that has to be somehow not in line with this curriculum. I actually think it does some really great things, and I had to remind myself when I was thinking of our fourth and fifth graders getting this, first of all of my fourth and fifth graders who are starting puberty. I know they said that puberty only went down by six months, but gosh, I feel like in another 10 years, we're going to have data that's younger than that. I have these conversations regularly with young menstruators, and for, you know, people born male, it's not as early, and that's just the biology of it, but I think having all the kids learn about this is only going to build empathy, and I like the fact that it circles back, because I have an idea, raising three boys, that they're not going to pay as much attention until it starts becoming a little more real for them, so I love that this curriculum repeats lessons. I had to remind myself that we do in pediatrics what we call anticipatory guidance. That means when patients come in for their baby's two-month visit, I talk to them about, you know, at four months, we have a lot of babies who roll off their parents' beds. I know it doesn't seem like your baby is going to roll over right now, but I promise you, once they learn it, they go from rolling like, once to like, four times, and then we get the call, "So now's the time to stop putting them in the middle of your bed while you blow dry your hair," or something. You know, I talk to kids about deodorant in third grade to try to help my teacher friends, and it's not necessary for all of them. And even knowing all of that, when I first thought about some of this stuff for fourth and fifth graders, even me, I was like, hmm, I got to think about that. But I thought about it, and I had conversations, and I really think where we got to is something that the vast majority of parents in our district will feel comfortable with. And the vast majority of parents nationwide support comprehensive sexual education. There are studies that go, you know, like, 89% in middle school and higher than that, like, 90s plus in high school. I think that's important to remember, because sometimes we hear the loudest voices and people who have the strongest opinions most, but most of us parents would probably like some help in talking about this. I needed my kids' kindergarten teachers to help them, like, learn the days of the week, even though I tried, and I think sometimes they listen to their teachers more than they listen to us parents, but parents are shown to be the most important people to have those repeat conversations. One concern that I have in this time where so many of our kids are exploring the gender binary and non-binary and gender identity, is that I don't want kids to ever feel like there is one way to be a girl and one way to be a boy, and only one way. And I really appreciate, one of the videos that I suggest everyone check out, it's a TED Talk, about, you don't always, you know, even though we talk about feeling a certain way with your gender, and some kids, trans kids, feel very much that they are born in the wrong body, but, you know, there's also kids who just don't feel like they fit those stereotypes, and it all can be very confusing. And so I really liked the language that was given. I had, you know, I was talking to the team about when we introduced that, and I really appreciated hearing from Cameron that, you know, these kids are getting bullied at Heritage, and having the language and building empathy early, I think, is an anti-bullying strategy, and I am completely in favor of anything that decreases bullying. I think we can't state enough as a community how much we need to limit technology. I think we should continue to have those conversations. And I wanted to end, because even in the American Academy of Pediatrics Guidelines Regarding Teaching Comprehensive Sex Ed, they talk really specifically about making it culturally relevant and taking into consideration religious preferences, cultural norms, community standards. So I was curious as to what my own religious community, the Reform Judaism community, said about comprehensive sexuality education. And so I thought they had a nice statement, I'm going to say it. "Comprehensive sexuality education is intrinsically linked to reproductive rights. Without it, individuals cannot make informed decisions about their bodies or futures. Accurate and comprehensive sex education provides students with the information they need to avoid unwanted pregnancies, sexually transmitted STIs, and other health problems. Jewish texts recognize and often celebrate sexuality as a necessary and crucial part of life and development. Providing young people with accurate and comprehensive sexuality education allows them to respect themselves and their bodies as well as each other." So that was just, you know, one voice among many. That was all I have to say.
Thank you.
So I do appreciate all of the work on this, and a couple, like Jenny said, the, where we got to make the choices on that video, I like the idea that if we can separate that out, if that's the one we choose, because it did seem like a little bit of an advertisement there, but I appreciate you being transparent and bringing that out versus, you know, there's a lot of slides that we don't see here, and so you, you were transparent to bring that out, because I, that would cause a little bit of a problem, I think. Is there any other places in the curriculum that Planned Parenthood information is being used, or any like that?
Not at all.
Nothing else in the curriculum? Okay, that's good. Yeah, that, and then just age-appropriate, I think, as we get more into it, I think that's going to be the big thing for me, is like, what is age-appropriate? So, yeah, I appreciate it, thanks.
As far as age appropriateness, two things. One, there is a really great sexuality education in America, sort of national group called SICUS, that goes through age by age, it's S-I-E-C-U-S. So if you Google that, you can find it, and there is a website that I can even send to you if you want, that takes you through grade level by grade level and makes their sex ed recommendations. This is what kids should know in preschool, this is what kids should know in kindergarten, and it's pages and pages and pages long, that goes through every possible scenario, section, topic that you can think of when it comes to sex ed, whether it is head, heart, mind, or body. And that is, that is a really great place to sort of look at the, like a clearinghouse for national recommendations for that. And the other piece is, when I look at my 16-year-old and, you know, like, playing video games or sitting at the dinner table or whatever, I see baby Sam, and it is so hard for me to look at that kid and think, "They're going to have sex at some point," you know, and, and look at Anna and go, "Oh, God, you know, here we go." And that, it's hard not to see your babies in the teenagers that are growing up before your very eyes, and so to think of them going through some of these topics at an age where I'm still seeing toddler them trying to get up on the couch is really hard. And when it comes down to it, for me, and I think for a lot of parents around the world, is the, the idea that we'll do anything to keep our kids safe, and having some of these weird conversations with your baby toddler teen is a hard thing to do, and it's hard to think that they're, they're there.
Yeah, and, you know, and so, I don't know, I'm kind of old school here, but I'm a 52-year-old that I don't really care about women's plumbing, you know, and, and so it's hard for me to sit there and think, oh, a fourth grader, you know, in the mix with that?
Yeah.
You know, I don't know, so, so I don't know, I mean, I think, yeah, so I'm, I'm struggling with that, I guess, a little bit, so that might be helpful for me, I appreciate you send it, if you could send that to me, or I'll look it up.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, yeah, go from there, thanks.
Thanks, Tim.
We have one more comment from JM.
So two things that didn't come up that I just wanted to circle back to, maybe three, but we'll start with the two. So the first thing is that I appreciated, in the eighth grade lesson, especially the goal-setting and personal contract, that is something that we have added at our home because, you know, everybody has different family guidelines or suggestions or whatever on when, when dating should occur, but we know that sometimes dating doesn't occur under the nose of, of the adults. So one of the things that we have added in our conversations at home is knowing who you are and what you want ahead of a situation. So not waiting for the, the, not waiting for the moment when you are first alone with someone that you care about, and having to make that decision while, you know, hormones are racing and brains are not fully developed and all of those things. So we've had a lot of conversations about, you know, having, having an open dialogue around, "Who are you? What are the words that you're going to say? What is it that you want?" And, and having that available prior to the encounter or the opportunity, and I think, you know, you talk a little bit about that in consent, but I think having that contract and thinking through those things ahead of time is really important, because we know that all of these things are coming together at once, and, you know, I, I also appreciated, like, the no shame, there's no shame in it, but who are you and what do you want to have happen in these situations ahead of time, so that we're making decisions when we're not in the moment? So I appreciated that a lot. The other thing that I was going to say, and I can't remember, I think you, when you were talking, Kristin, about splitting by gender, and I did mention this to Cameron before the meeting, and I am the parent of boy-girl twins. They identify as boy-girl, and they were assigned that way at birth, and so anyway, what I was going to say about that is, fourth grade and fifth grade were interesting times at our house during the weeks of reproductive health, because they were split into two separate classrooms, so they were coming home with, you know, two different sets of information, and it became a bit of a one-upmanship at our house, I will say, like, "Let me tell you everything that I know." Well, let me tell you everything that I know. Yeah, well, this is going to happen to me. Well, this is going to happen to me, and this, you know, it kind of went on and on to the point where, you know, I didn't, I didn't know better, I didn't have the parent resources that you have, to the point where I said, "You go take your shower, and we're going to have a conversation, and then we'll switch," because my husband travels a lot for work, and I think that he intentionally planned to be out of town that week, so, anyway, anyway, so I actually appreciate that it would be the same messaging coming home, so that there wouldn't be this feeling of secrecy, and like, "I learned this, and you learned this, well, what's going to happen to me is worse than what's going to happen to you," and all of those sorts of things. There were, there were some really great conversations that came from that, one being, "Don't put your laundry in the closet and hide it, like, it's okay, we can have these conversations." So I appreciate the transparency and the age appropriateness at which these things are There was one other thing I was just going to say. There was one other thing I was just going to say. Maybe it'll come to me later, but I just, I feel like in watching what we've been able to watch and clicking on the links that you sent to us ahead of time and hearing it delivered from you today, there's a lot to be appreciated about the, the curriculum as a whole. And there are a lot of things that I wish I had had as, as a child. Oh, that was the other thing I was going to say. My spouse grew up in a household with, with a male brother, no sisters. And his mother had had, you know, some medical things, so didn't have that experience until we were married. And that was difficult because, you know, he didn't really understand the mood swings, like all the things that can happen during a period. And so that was the one thing that as uncomfortable as it may have been for him, I was determined that our male son would have some empathy for his sisters currently and future partners and, you know, girlfriends, whatever it might be. So I do think there is a benefit, especially from just being empathetic to, to your partner and having, and, and, you know, every couple is different and they can make those decisions. And I think that that's the other thing that we can keep in mind in terms of parenting, that parents have the right to review the curriculum and opt out of portions or all. So, so there are, there are, that is Michigan law in, in terms of sex education. So those were the three things that I was thinking about that weren't touched on that I just thought that I would share from
Thank you, Jenny.
This little old me.
You have a quick one? Sure.
Or a really long one?
All right, go for it.
I just, I wanted to, to mention the, that this curriculum is, seems to be super inclusive. And I am happy about that. We did pass the transgender and non-binary students policy in 2021. I know a lot of students, our high school students gave feedback that that was missing for LGBTQ inclusive language. And, and so I, I want to encourage, I know Cameron, you mentioned looking at the high school curriculum and that's, what did you say, a meeting for a day or something? So the committee and powers that be, that we look at, look at that sooner than later to be in compliance with that policy and Title IX and other policies as well. So thank you for taking all the feedback and those laws and policies into, and best practices into, you know, looking at what you are proposing and recommending. Thank you.
Yeah. And just before we kind of transition to the next phase, I do want to go back to that reminder and encourage folks, you know, the, the reason we decided to have this hearing in June and have the second one in August was to really maximize the amount of time that the community had to come in to review this curriculum on their own. So again, it is a lot and we encourage folks to look at everything and, and to come with questions and feedback. So please, you know, we encourage folks to reach out to, to me, to Kara, to schedule an appointment or to talk more about that.
Thank you. I have a, I had a couple of things I was going to say, but they're pretty well covered by everybody else. I do have some practical questions. So this presentation that you shared with us this evening with all the great links, will this be available to the public or some version of it without your notes perhaps?
Yes, we can make this available.
Well, is, I just curious to know what your plan was and, and basically what are the practical steps in accessing this curriculum?
Also, a couple of the videos are marked like unavailable, just so you know.
All right.
To us.
Okay.
And the one we have. Okay, that's good to know. Yeah, we'll definitely check the, the links, the supplemental videos should all be able to be accessed. I know I saw some people taking pictures of the screens and things like that. So they should be able to be accessed through just a quick YouTube search. And everything in terms of the teacher materials, in terms of slides that will be accessed by, by teachers in the classroom with students, those things will be available during the public review process here at Liberty. Did you want to say something about the slides?
Just that we will, the, the supplemental video lists, we will make sure that that is available readily at Liberty. And, you know, can, I mean, they're just, they're all YouTube videos. You can just Google it too.
Sure.
You know, so.
And this meeting is recorded and on YouTube.
Yes. Yep.
Right, but the links on this presentation aren't necessarily available. So the last question I had is, earlier you and I, Kristen, I think, had a conversation about a feedback form for the public. Is that somewhere?
Yeah, it's, it's in my head currently.
Got it.
I just ran out of time.
It will eventually become clearly available.
But this evening, I will, I will finish making that and we'll get that up.
We did the same for the Body Safety Talks.
Yeah.
Yep.
Super, okay, no pressure. We'll, we'll work out the details, but I appreciate that it's going to be available. And if there are any little glitches early on, we'll, we want people to see the curriculum in the community.
Yeah, we really do.
Exactly. So if there are any issues that come up, we'll resolve them as quickly as possible. And that's where your, your email address comes in really handy. So you're not allowed to go on vacation this summer. So if you would like to, oh, could you do my favor, Brad, or and get the forms, like to find out who's, who's on the list? If you want to sit down, somebody over there does. Jackie. Thank you. The fabulous Jackie Martin does. Now, we will start with the students, although Ari has graduated, so technically, yeah, you're still a student. Oh, we have an M Habrecht. Oh, there you are. And you are a student.
I am a student.
Thank you. Oh, are we going to, we'll kind of adhere to the three minutes. Just a quick note about public comments, just for you all. Thank you. That a member of the public can address this SEAB briefly and the board for up to three minutes, request or request to be scheduled on the agenda of a future meeting. Please note that students will be given priority to speak. The first port, well, there's no first portion here. So individuals addressing the SEAB should take into consideration the rules of common courtesy, please, the public participation. A portion of the meeting cannot be used to make personal attacks on an SEAB member, a Board of Education member, a district employee, or student, or superintendent. Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Ari Habrecht and I'm a student at Celine High School. Celine's sex ed program does a great job explaining how a couple with sperm and egg have a baby. What it does currently miss is how non-heterosexual couples can have kids. Even before we're teenagers, we know how babies are made, but that idea always left me stumped because I want to have kids. But what if I'm with another female? I didn't appreciate having to do the research and ask my mom about how this would work. Many of my friends felt the same. Some of them are less comfortable asking their parents or adults in their life, so I was left to explain to them their options. This isn't fair. I don't mind at all explaining this to my friends, but I shouldn't have to. It isn't fair that heterosexual couples have it all laid out for them in school and have no questions left to ask, while students like myself have to recruit Google to teach us our version of that day's lesson. I agree that it is crucial that all students receive sufficient sex education, no matter their sexuality or gender identity. I also agree that the curriculum should use fewer terms like girls and boys or women and men, because not all people with vaginas or that can become pregnant identify as girls or women and people that have penises and have erections identify as boys or men. Many teachers use these terms and it's incredibly harmful to students like me who do not identify with those terms. In terms of consent and sexual harassment and assault, I support that we must teach younger students as young as elementary school that parts of their body are not for anyone else to touch or ask to see. And if inappropriate things are happening, encourage students to reach out to a trusted adult. In opposition to Lesson 12 of the eighth grade proposed curriculum, I believe teens should have access to links, resources, and even locations where they can get safe, free, and anonymous STI testing. Most teens are not comfortable or safe telling an adult or even a peer that they would like to get tested for an STI. These resources allow students to be their safest and healthiest in terms of STIs. Another thing I believe we must reassess is how we approach sex ed during COVID. We cannot again try to stuff a missed year into the next year's curriculum. That was how my health class was attempted to function in sixth grade. I missed much of both fifth and sixth grade sex ed classes and therefore didn't have much information until I was taught again in ninth grade this year. This included information about consent, including the legal age of consent. We must put something in place to better teach students their sex ed course if we have another asynchronous year like 2020 or 2021. Thank you for listening.
Thank you so much. Next up is Ari Hayward, alum, proud alum.
Hi, I am Ari Hayward and yes, I am a proud alum. I am also a former SEAB member. And as a student, my experience with Celine's sex ed curriculum was, it was not very informative. It was at best antiquated and at worst inaccurate and uninclusive. The information on topics such as HIV/AIDS was also inaccurate and there was also no inclusive material for transgender or non-binary such as myself or any other gender diverse students. And I was very, I guess, affected by that because, yeah, we shouldn't be able to have to teach ourselves. Having been on SEAB, I know that members worked very hard and to bring the most updated inclusive materials to Celine students. And I just want to thank them for their hard work and dedication because I know the next Celine students to take sex ed, like my sister, will very much benefit from the fruits of their labor. And sex education is like so needed. It's also to make sure that we don't feel gross about ourselves because I know as someone who I guess does not, I am non-binary and I guess I felt gross with myself from not being able to learn properly. So I hope this is accepted.
Thank you very much. Next up is Tiffany Alexander, proud parent and parent of an alum.
Yes, proud parent of an alum and proud parent of a fourth grader on her way to Heritage. So first of all, I'm super excited about the curriculum because one of the things my, my kid talked to me about when they took sex ed was they, they sat there, they had a biology book and there were some questions to answer and they read the material to themselves and they just wrote down to themselves the, the answers that, that they were going to put down. And that was pretty much it. There was no actual discussion or anything like that. And it is hard as a parent to attempt to have these conversations. Some kids are more comfortable, some parents are more comfortable, and some kids aren't. So we are really reliant upon the school to do this. So I'm really grateful to see such a comprehensive curriculum that starts at a very young age, which really is, especially when it comes to consent, really important. I also noticed on the screen, it wasn't mentioned, but I noticed it that there was discussion, I think it was around seventh grade, talking about toxic relationships, which I also really appreciated. I think kids need to have the understanding of what a relationship should be and what it isn't. And I think frequently watching television and, and they don't. Unfortunately, not even every child has a, a good role model for what a healthy relationship is at home. So I think that having those discussions will help make them safer for the future. I did want to know, when does the discussion? And this might've been answered and I might've missed it, so it was a lot of material. When does the discussion about sex trafficking happen? Did that happen in seventh grade, eighth grade? I, I might've missed that. I guess that would be one thing I want to see is by middle school that should be covered. And then I appreciate the idea of had not separating the kids and having them all. I think that the point was made that because kids have been separated, that men, boys become men who don't care about how women feel and what we go through. And I think that that's the whole purpose, is that by putting them together, they will learn to care and to have empathy and for it not to be foreign or weird and then women don't have to be embarrassed about their bodies in front of the men that they choose to be with or just men that they're friends with. A lot of kids go to school and they end up getting made fun of by a lot of boys who don't understand what's going on. And I think that would cut down on a lot of that. So again, I just really want to thank the members of SEAB. I thought it was great. I'm really excited and looking forward to what Summerlin can have to experience at Heritage.
Thank you. Is that an easily addressed question about when sex, sex trafficking shows up in the curriculum? If it is, I'm happy just to get a quick, if it's not, if it takes longer, then we'll pass on.
So we can, why don't you move on and then we can.
Okay. Dr. David Hayward.
Thank you. I'd like to just kind of, I guess, echo a lot of the comments that we've already heard about what a positive step forward this new curriculum seems to be. As, as the parent of an incoming fourth grader, this is something that is, is very timely from my perspective. And I noticed, you know, as I was looking at the, the citations for when the current curriculum was developed, you know, my, my fourth grader was born in 2015. I think all of the, all of the current curriculum was developed long before that and most of it even before my now graduate was born in 2006. So long since time for an update. And I'm very, very pleased to see, you know, something that's very thoughtful in terms of both inclusivity and in terms of bringing in important concepts like consent. You know, if there's one thing I could say, it's that I don't think that one week a year is, is, does justice to this important set of, of concepts. It would be nice to, to see this worked somehow into something that can be done bit by bit throughout the year and not just kind of pushed all into one place. Thanks.
Thank you. And finally, Megan Gunnison, who is a parent and SEAB member. Jackie, is there one more?
I can wait. No, go. Okay. Well, I talked to you more as a parent than as an SEAB, SEAB member, but yes, I was. I had expressed concerns in our committee meetings about, just about target audience. I don't disagree with any of the information. It's obviously based in science and best practice. But as a mom of many, all four of my kids are different. And so what I would have chosen for one at one age, I may not choose for another. So I still appreciate the fact that Celine has an opt-out program. I understand that it's mandated by Michigan law. However, having it be a non-confrontational or non, what's the word I want to use? Negative reaction when somebody chooses to opt out their child. You know, as a parent and a primary educator of my children, I like to have that as a back door option if I choose to use it. I did want to highlight that I appreciate that you livestreamed today's meeting, which was nice and I'd like to see that more often just because it's hard for some parents who has a daycare or school issues or distance or Michigan Avenue traffic to try to get here on time. I thought that that was a nice, a nice add so that people can't say, well, I didn't know or when would I see it or how can I find it? I think the more open and honest and transparent we are, the better off people are in general. In support of Ms. Peebler's comment about Michigan law respecting the right of parents to choose for their children, I wanted to highlight part of the Michigan State Code. That's MCL, hold on a second, 380 something, and I'll find the rest of it. But it specifically states that a pupil can be excused without penalty or loss of academic credit since sex ed's not a requirement for the state of Michigan. But what I did notice as a, a parent of a middle schooler this year and as a high schooler and in the past since transferring to this district, there is this alternate assignment right now for kids whose parents opt them out, which is punitive and it's, has a negative connotation. And it's a lot of work. It's not a 20-minute amaze video. It's like, at least in the high school, it's a big paper and it, it feels like those kids are being penalized because their parents are making the choice for their family. So I would like for you to revisit that in your operationalization or in your scope of sequence of how you would address not penalizing a kid because their parents are making what they think and which is far within their rights to make a decision for their children. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I know that Ms. Davis is working on a response right away. We have one more from Tran. Thank you.
Oh, there we go, the green light. I've heard so much about it on YouTube. So I do have a couple of questions about the program for the SEAB. I don't know if you can answer these today because they're a little bit. I don't know if you can answer these today because they're a little bit, it might take a little bit longer. But one of the things that was said was that, um, the, the greatest changes were in the grade eight curriculum. And listening to the program, really not knowing what was taught in grade eight previously, I guess I'm wondering if you could kind of flesh that out a little bit in terms of what some of those changes are. And then the other thing, um, which was something I was thinking about today on a walk was, not so much exactly this, but partly this, is getting away from the dry biology is what I heard. And I was thinking about it, whether it was biology, whether it was sociology, which is better, should they be both? And going towards something socio-econ, uh, socio-emotional. And I guess I was hoping you could provide a few examples of what that means, how that, uh, some examples in the curriculum of how those changes have taken place. And that's basically it. Thank you.
Well, I think that is, thanks, Tran. I think that that, if this is for an article, that maybe you can get a longer answer from, from the team. Otherwise, it'll probably be covered in the next session, the next hearing. Thank you. Well, I want to thank, oh, 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 yes, you were gonna answer that one. Probing question, which I've already, oh, sex trafficking. Thank you.
Right, just to the question about when the concept or topic of sex trafficking was discussed at the middle school. In our current scope and sequence, it is not, uh, addressed at all at the middle school. So the, I guess, options, um, based on where we're at now is that potentially, including Lesson Five, which is in the middle school curriculum, but that was removed from our recommended, so, scope and sequence. So it's currently not in there at any grade level. Or, right, I mean, we would have to make that decision as well. So I think, you know, seventh or eighth or something like that, probably. But, um, and then the, I guess the other option would be similar to what we did with the conversation about intercourse, removing that aspect from the upper elementary lesson where it was introduced and moving it to sixth grade. Sex trafficking is a topic in one of the upper elementary lessons that we removed, specifically Lesson Eight in the upper elementary. We could remove that topic and move it into, uh, into the middle school. Or to keep it out altogether again.
Interesting question. The question was, why, why was it removed? You had mentioned that you didn't think that it was a
Yeah, so we, again, it, we were kind of split as a committee. Several members felt strongly about including it, specifically as Michigan's is, you know, kind of a hub for sex trafficking. And it's a topic that several committee members felt strongly about having that conversation with students and equipping them with skills like an escape plan and, uh, avoiding those risky situations. Others felt like it was, uh, to have a whole lesson especially was potentially overwhelming for students at the middle school level.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that. I just want to say thank you then to everyone who showed up this evening, everyone who's watching online or watching tomorrow, not right now. Uh, I also wanted to thank, if there are any, again, SEAB or SEAB, sorry, members here in the room, thank you, thank you, thank you for all the excellent and hard work you did on this. I spent a lot of time looking at this material and I'm looking forward to looking at it over the next two months in a more leisurely way. And I know the rest of the community is as well. And the question, thank you for figuring out a way to, to get, uh, public feedback. We'll, uh, we may end up making a public, uh, statement about that once the form is solidified because we do want to hear from everybody. Great, well, thank you very much. I guess I get to, I'd like to adjourn without objection. I'd like to adjourn this meeting at 7:54. I'm hearing no objection, so, boom. Thank you so much.